Counselors, can I please get a motion to get out of recess?
To move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Again, I apologize about the inconveniences. Very unusual that this is happening.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as I was saying, each year, we have applied certain monies, even taking out loans, bonds, for things that have been necessary in the schools. That is beyond the amount that's promised, and I don't know why they haven't made use of the net.
So net school spending?
Right.
So that's different, Counsel Alvarez, that's different from...
You said they haven't done anything with it.
So what I'll say this, in the last three years, we've seen a lot better improvement as to meet the required net school spending that's set by the Commonwealth. Now, net school spending, those funds are not funds that can be used to pay for infrastructure changes?
Mm-hmm.
That's separate. That's like you're paying for teachers, for books, what goes on within the schools.
I would like to see better books than if that money is there. I said, I don't know why the money's not being spent then, because, I mean, we've had the criticism that our textbooks are outdated, and I wouldn't see, I don't understand why that would be true if we have this net school funding.
Sure. So what I would say is...
So what I'm saying, with all due respect, is that we've, maybe through you, we could do, have more of a liaison, have more of a understanding, but we have, we have done our share, and perhaps we need to do more. But I guess we will be better educated if we had an ongoing communication with the school committee, and not just when a committee member has stepped down and we have to appoint someone. You know, it goes beyond that.
And I would agree 100% on that there needs to be more conversations between both governance bodies, and obviously Lawrence Public Schools and the City of Lawrence, that definitely needs to happen. But what I would say is that I do not think, as, and I'll put myself, you know, in this, I don't think all of us have done enough to support our public schools. If you look at the data, it is clear that for years, it was an unenforced mandate, that nobody was ensuring that the City of Lawrence was meeting its responsibilities when it came to funding our schools. So while we had a big issue when it came to the actual administration of the public schools and what was going on within the schools, there was also a huge funding issue. We are fixing one, right? So we have improved, I think everyone here can say, that the schools have improved tremendously. In orders for, you know, the central office, we cut a lot of staff there. It's now, you know, it's bones compared to what it was before. Now, we're asking for the City of Lawrence, I mean, I think the superintendent's asking for the City of Lawrence to go beyond the 5% that is required. I'm saying at least what's required to make sure that in the future budget, and budgets moving forward, that that's being met. Thank you.
Okay. I'll be happy to look into that as well. But as I said, I don't entirely believe that the council hasn't done anything. It has done stuff throughout the years, and will continue to do so. And with a person like yourself, who's ready to open communications and help link discussion, we should do better. We will do better. See what I'm saying? But we spend a lot of time here on so much, you know, that has to do not only with the schools, but the workers, the citizens, everything that they need. And we've had those discussions where we want to be more intelligent about how we do housing. At the same time, the outcry that has come here, year after year, has been, "We need affordable housing. I can't afford the rent," et cetera. Those are the voices that have been heard throughout the years, as opposed to, "We're building new housing," like you said, which makes sense, it's intelligent. Please increase funding for the schools, because our classes are overcrowded. Very little discussion. And if the committee here is about it, the school committee, then, you know, I think it would behoove the school committee to communicate with us about that happening. So I thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Make a motion to withdraw this document. Motion to withdraw has been made.
Second.
Properly second. All those in favor, please say aye. Moving on, we have document 19316, it's a presentation of mandatory recycling initiative. It's been placed on the agenda by Carlos Hakes, our DPW Director. Good evening, Mr. Hakes.
Thank you, City Council President. We're here tonight with members of the DPW, the School Department, and also our assistants from Mass DEP, I call her a recycling consultant, to make a presentation to the City Council about an initiative that we want to undertake under the Department of Public Works, as it refers to a mandatory recycling ordinance. Now Carolyn, who's our consultant in this matter, will make a presentation to the council members regarding what this initiative involves and where we are heading with this. So we hope that, if you have any questions with Carolyn, she'll be more than happy to answer any questions about that initiative, and anything else that's going on in the Department of Public Works, I'll be able to answer all those questions. So with that, I turn it over to Carolyn Dan from Mass DEP.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, City Counselors, and thank you for giving me the time to meet with you tonight. My name's Carolyn Dan. As Carlos said, I represent Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. My job within the DEP is to make sure that the municipalities that I work with get grants to help them reduce their waste and increase their recycling. One of the things I've been doing this year, in the last two years, is to work with the schools, and as you just heard, the schools are really getting to be an exciting place to work these days. And one of the most exciting ones is Arlington's Middle School, and I'd just like to take a minute to introduce Mike Serman, who is a teacher at the Arlington Middle School, who's been leading the green team there, and having them work on recycling. And I'd like to show you a video that they did, and he can just tell you what they have done.
So where's the video? It's gonna play there?
Thank you, Councilors, for having me here tonight. I'm Mike Serman, along with David May.
Mike, wanna start it?
We're gonna let the video speak for itself.
Excellent.
Oops, nope.
Start it again.
Oh, this gets me so mad. See this tray? This tray takes 100 million years to decompose. This, none of this goes in the clean bin. I wish there was some good house. My wife, she's cheating. No, no, no! Not in my bed! No, no, no! Not in my bed! All this trash is weighing me down. We'll help you. Thank you. Thank you for breathing. No problem. Wait, this doesn't go in the recycling bin? It has to be inside. Let's keep the Arlington green and clean!
Well, as you can see, we're very proud of our students and what they've accomplished in just one year. That was our first year last year. This year, we're continuing with our green team and promoting recycling. And as you can see, it's not only about recycling and recycling as much as possible, but it's about recycling the right materials, doing it right. You know, not only is it environmentally helpful to the planet, but it's also making our schools, the city, everything better if we go to recycling across the city. And there's a lot of exciting things we've been doing, we've continued. A lot of the students you saw in that video were in seventh grade, now they're in eighth, and they've really taken to a fifth-grade group that they're kind of mentoring and passing the torch. And we're really excited, because this fifth-grade group can really continue with this program and bring it to unbelievable, you know, heights and accomplishments, and that's what we're looking for over the years. But as a council, we're asking you that if you do mandatory make recycling for the city, it will help, and we can help you get that word out, and how to do it correctly. So once again, thank you so much.
I hope you enjoyed that. I was very proud of the Arlington Middle School students. That was really one of the best videos I've seen. And I just wanted to share with you some of what I do is work with municipalities on different ways to reduce their waste, and working with the City of Lawrence. I've been looking forward to finding ways to reduce waste. And just wanted to kind of review some of the obvious, but what are the benefits of, why are we doing this? Why would it matter to Lawrence? Clearly, reducing waste has impacts on cleaner air, less litter in the city, and reduced greenhouse gases. You may not know that recycling actually produces more jobs than trash does, so it actually has an economic impact. And more directly for you here in the city, recycling saves money compared to putting items in the trash, so it helps the city budget. Looking across the state, there are some sort of overview patterns that I can tell you about. The state as a whole generates more trash than we can dispose of, so some of it actually goes out of state, which puts some pressure on the facilities in the state. At the same time, the DEP is closing some landfills that just are old and filled, and so we have a continuing growth in trash and a shrinking amount of disposal capacity. So it creates kind of a crossroads for us, and we need to figure out, what are we gonna do about that? Are we actually gonna be able to reduce waste? If we don't, we're gonna have more trash and probably more waste-to-energy facilities, or more capacity, more burners, more units somewhere. I know you sit in Lawrence, right between Haverhill and North Andover, two out of the five in the state of the waste-to-energy facilities, so don't need any more here, is my guess. If another option is more trash, if we don't have any more capacity, the prices are gonna go up. That's not a great option for the city either. You don't want to have to pay more. So why reduce waste? Because what's one of the options that will actually save you money. Recycling costs something, but it costs a lot less than trash. And you can see, right now, Lawrence is in a good position, because you're paying zero for your recycling, and you're paying about $60 for trash. So if we could only magically convince everybody to take the appropriate recyclables out of the trash and put it in the recycling, it saves the city $60 for every ton that they do that with. Some communities are paying more, and Lawrence may be in that situation in a couple of years, but even if you are, even if you're paying as much as $20 a ton, there's still a $40 savings with every ton that you move into the recycling bin. And as I tell a lot of my municipalities, I don't know a single municipality that has money to burn, literally, and that's what putting it in the trash is. So at the state, we know we have a shortfall in capacity, and so we wanted to preserve the disposal capacity. We made it a, we established waste bans back in the 1990s, and the waste bans are designed to both preserve capacity and make sure that hazardous material doesn't get into the environment. So waste bans at the state level are on recyclable cardboard, recyclable paper, recyclable glass, metal, and plastic containers, and hazardous waste. Those things are already banned at the state level from being disposed of. If you were to institute a mandatory recycling policy for the city residents, you would be mirroring that state policy, state regulation. And DEP is actually beginning to watch a little bit more closely at the incinerators to make sure that the trucks coming in do not have a lot of recycling in them. So there is more enforcement every year. So why mandatory recycling? You might ask that. One is to head off increasing disposal costs. As I said, recycling does cost less than trash, so any material that's put into the recycling will save you money. I know, and I face this all the time, many people feel that it's just a small thing, this little water bottle, how can that possibly make a difference? But if you think about 18,000 households in the city that are in the municipal recycling system, and you multiply that one individual's decision times every single day, times every single household, it does add up, and it ends up making a huge difference. There's a lot of room for improvement in Lawrence. You're now throwing away about 28,000 tons per year, and recycling less than 4,000. It's about a 13% recycling rate. If you only got another 2,000 tons per year recycled, that's $120,000 in savings. If you went to 4,000 tons, that would be $240,000 in savings. Although savings aren't gonna fix your unfunded mandate, but they could hire a teacher, they could do a fair amount of good in the city budget, I'm sure. So how would this happen? The DPW and Mass DEP are willing to work together to help make this happen. The DPW will work on submitting a draft ordinance to you for your review. Through my office, the DPW is going to submit a number of grant requests. They're gonna request a grant for a recycling ambassador, that's kind of another person on the ground, to actually meet face-to-face with people and help them learn how to recycle properly. There's another organization called The Recycling Partnership that also has grant programs, and has nationally-tested education materials to go out on the curb to people. We hope to give out recycling barrels, similar to the trash barrels, but slightly different colors, with a nice logo on the top, and pictures and diagrams on the top of the lid, with some subsidies from DEP and possibly also from the recycling partnership. The third partner in this endeavor would be the hauler. We can work with the hauler to enforce no recycling, no trash, and that could work. And enforcement sounds like a harsher term than it perhaps is. What it really means is, there's a lot of education at first, and usually, most municipalities that do this, they might have fines at the far end of the road, but usually, there are a number of steps down the way that says, "We're gonna send you a letter, we're gonna come meet with you, we're gonna talk with you, we're gonna make you come into the DPW office." If you've persisted through all of that, and you still aren't recycling, then maybe there's a fine. So I think at the end of the day, if we actually get through a recycling, a mandatory recycling ordinance, what will we get? Lawrence will get less trash, more recycling. If you think about what's happening now, the little containers that people put their recycling in now, it probably blows all over the city, contributing to the litter. There will be less litter if we can give these barrels out. And they're large recycling barrels, they have a lid, they're, they stand, they're exactly the same size as the trash barrels, you know, but they're gonna be different, so the people will know them apart, but they're gonna be huge compared to what they have now.
Good.
And there will be cleaner streets. The students, like Michael's students, will learn about recycling, and the students' families will learn from those students. So my hope is that you will have a lot less recycling and have more money in your budget at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation in regards to recycling. Counselors, just as a point of information, there is a document currently in the ordinance committee that has been introduced...
Is the law already?
...by Counsel Madonado and myself, which I think will greatly tie it into this discussion. For the document that we have with us today, this is a presentational action...
Right.
...is required by the City Council. But if you have any questions, I think it will be a good opportunity to ask at this point.
Thank you, Council President. Is our recycling coordinator here? Hi, could you come forward, please?
Good evening, Counselors.
Hi. What is it that you've been able to accomplish with the recycling program? First of all, when did you start?
So, I started three years ago.
Two years ago.
Three years ago.
Three years ago?
Yes, 2014.
Okay.
I've been, each step of the way, I've had input regarding planning the recycling programs at the schools, applying to grants, receiving the grants, and deciding, and being a part of the group meeting and deciding how we would spend the money. We decided to spend some of the grant funds on stipends. He's received stipends. The, sorry, like the green team that we've created, but the original group, it started with John Iense, where he first told me when I started that he wanted to implement recycling programs at the public schools, because there weren't any existing recycling programs. And they were throwing away 40%, 40% of the school's trash was all paper and recyclable items. So with some of the, the first year spent, we worked on buying the 96-gallon recycling green carts, which you featured in the video, distributed those to all the schools, made sure they were on route to be picked up. So right away, the schools started, I don't know exactly how much they saved in money, but I know that 40% of that trash that was previously being disposed of was now diverted and picked up with the recyclables.
Because it hadn't, it hadn't come at first, right?
So, excuse me?
There was no containers?
When I started, correct, there weren't. I guess in the past, there were, but they were all taken away, and that was with the previous contract. So, and again, you know, when I started three years ago, the recycling rate was 6%. So just with the recycling labels alone, and our effort with the public schools, and just me being out working each day, we've been able to see a steady increase. But I believe it's a bit of a plateau now, with 12 or 13%, which is why we really need to go to recyclable, recycling carts. And in order to help us fund paying them, we want to be able to utilize grants that are offered by the state. Now, we can only utilize these grants if we have mandatory cycling. Not only, because we've been able to get some grants, just because we have recycling programs, but with mandatory recycling ordinance, it would open the door for more funds.
I wonder, because we had, a couple of years back, a few years back, there was supposed to be a pilot, taking one area of the city to begin to demonstrate and roll out the whole recycling thing. Was that abandoned?
So that was, that was, that was before my time.
Is there any history available to you guys?
No, that was before my time, because we haven't, in my, in the three years, ever discussed.
Is that was something that the council voted on?
Well, I know that now, we are going, we are doing a, we would like to do a pilot program, actually, right now, with not just one area of the city, but two. So if this works out smoothly, and we can get the ordinance, and we can get the funds to buy...
Right, roll it out, and then...
Right, the first year. So the first year of our plan would be to compare, if I'm correct, Mount Vernon area to the Arlington District.
I'd like to provide some point of information here. We have document in the ordinance committee. Currently, there's document 3815, which was introduced by myself and Counsel Madonado...
Okay.
...in regards to recycling in the city. At that time, we had a, we did not have a system to implement the recycling in the city and enforce it. So it has been tabled at that level, and I've had discussion with the new DPW Director.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure, Council President, that this is not abandoned when a set of other people come into play. We never know what the future holds. And I don't know, if we're saying that by creating the ordinance, we can guarantee it, but we did, I know that we did vote years ago on a so-called strategy to begin with certain parts, neighborhoods, to do the recycling, and then roll that throughout the city. But I never, we never got any reports back. And of course, they weren't here then, so they don't know. I want to make sure that the effort that's being put into action now is secured, so that if somebody else comes in, you know, they go on to bigger and better things, there will be, you know, other people coming in and being able to take it from where it is and take it out further.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Because if, I mean, once recycling is mandatory, it does open up many more opportunities for funding.
And I'm glad that you took the schools, because I believe a lot that in creating any type of social change, the children are so important to that. I mean, they have kids telling their parents about how cigarettes is bad for them, you know, there's like public health matters. There's also been the issue of like even electricity, or doing public safety. They go home and do a public safety thing, like the safety of the house...
Yep.
...whether the electric is covered properly, you know, so they go out and do a safety thing, where the schools have. And then from that point on, it, it kind of gets the parents involved as well...
Correct.
...and gets the parents to start a different behavior, because the child is...
And pardon me, I interrupt. I wasn't planning on speaking today, and now that I'm standing up here, I'm like, I'm able to think of some other things that I want to make sure that I tell you. Also, we're also working with a group called the Promotoras, the group of, they work with the churches in Lawrence.
Oh, good.
They do. And I've worked with them, and we've started a training program where we trained some of the local pastors and priests, and they came, when they attended, they left with a pamphlet and a booklet explaining how they can continue training others on recycling, because, like you said, it's important to reach the students, so they can go home and influence their parents. I think also, on the weekends, well, not just on the weekends, but the faith group is very impactful in our lives, and it's nice when you go to church or mass, and you hear the priest talking about the importance of recycling also. And that takes effort with meetings, and they require funding and help, and altogether...
I'm gonna continue this discussion in the ordinance committee. I am a member of the ordinance committee, though I wasn't there regretfully when you were there.
Sounds like you supported it.
But I look forward to continuing to speak with you about it, and maybe introduce some ideas. But again, I just want to make sure that it doesn't die with the people who move on.
You're right. It needs to stay, because Lawrence, you know, deserves greener and cleaner community, and it starts with, I believe, it starts with mandatory recycling.
And I agree, that I can't deal with those little bins.
Right. So we're listening to a lot of the issues and complaints, and ultimately, what it comes down to is, when you tell someone you should recycle, and they say, "Okay, I'm willing, I'm gonna start today, can I have a bin?" And you give them a label, that's great, but I think if everyone had the bucket, and again, with the recycling ordinance allows us to apply to a grant for an enforcement coordinator, where the state is funding to have someone work with me, you know, 25 hours a week or full-time, just flipping lids and using software. hours a week or full-time, just flipping lids and using software.
So, there's been some improvement with the asthma. We did fight against, I was part of that, the incinerators and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, the Lawrence Environmental Action Group.
Good days. And, and we've achieved a lot, I think, through the mayor's task force and others-
Yes.
-in terms of, in the-
It's all intertwined, it's all for quality of life.
So, this is only gonna make it better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Maldonado.
Yes, I have a question. Can you come forward, please?
Thank you, Councilor.
Yes, sir.
In your presentation, you mentioned that there is a, a couple of grants that are available. Has the DPW department prepared those applications for the grants, or is that something that is gonna start now?
They are in the process right now. The grant deadline is mid-June, so they've been working hard and getting ready for it. They applied for them last year, and they've gotten them the last couple of years, so I have every faith that they will get them again this year.
Okay. You also, in your presentation, mentioned a couple of ideas that should be included in the ordinance. One is the no recycling, no collection of trash, which I think is a great idea, and also the fines. I think we need to obviously include an incentive through fines that are going to kind of push a little people that are lazy at home and that are not willing to separate the garbage. I know from what I can see as I drive around the city that recycling has been reduced substantially because the city was not providing any recycling bins and, and because they were too small anyway. So, I think we have lost a tremendous opportunity in the past two or three years to increase the recycling rather than, than, rather than reduce it, and, and I hope that, that we take a, a positive step, not only to create the ordinance, but to get those barrels that are so essential. Because if we are going to increase the recycling, then obviously, we need to provide the appropriate recycle bins that are going to accommodate the, the increase in recycling. I know that in some of my properties, for example, right now, half of the garbage is equal to half of the recycling, okay? But there are so many little recycling bins that, that you see a, a large quantity of reci, so, I, I think that as, as we become more sophisticated and, and we, and we project to an increasing recycling, that obviously, writing the grants and getting those recycle bins larger, I think is gonna make a, a very positive change in our city.
I do think you make a good point, and I, I'd just like to kind of reiterate what Moises said, which is that the ordinance is really the first step and opens the gate to the grants. Okay? So, it really is a necessary step. DEP will not give recycling cart grants unless there's an ordinance including a fine.
Yep. Councilors, I know that this is a discussion we are all very passionate about, but this is gonna, i- it's in the ordinance committee, so if you have any further questions or wish to continue the discussion, I will encourage that it happens at the ordinance committee level. This particular document, we have no action to take on. Can I please get a motion to withdraw? Any submissions by the director, feel free to send it directly to the ordinance committee, given the fact that we already have a document number. We don't have to be submitted. Okay?
Just the next step at this, as we move forward, as Ms. Stan just mentioned, is that we'll be setting up a draft recycling, mandatory recycling ordinance, and obviously, there'll be debates and conversations about that, what shape that's gonna take, but we will work with our recycling partners to mimic similar recycling orders that have been established in other cities, and to have that as a starting point for the city of Lawrence and go from there.
Wonderful, thank you, we greatly appreciate it, Director. Councilor Rodriguez?
Sure, thank you, Council President. Are you planning on submitting a new document, or are you planning on working with the document that is already in the ordinance?
I suggest we don't submit a new document. I suggest that we just go with the one that we have in the ordinance committee.
Yeah, we'll work with the coordinator, and we'll come up with a, with a new document.
No, so the- Any, any information that is provided, will go directly through the document that already exists, that way, we don't have to resubmit it and take longer-
Okay.
-given the fact that it's already in the ordinance committee. But we'll, we'll talk about it offline, so we don't continue the discussion. We have about thirty or forty documents in the agenda and plenty of people in the audience, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Director. Councilors, can I please get a motion to withdraw?
So, move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any further discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on with the agenda, we have appropriations, orders, and resolutions. Document one-seven-seven-seventeen is fiscal year two thousand eighteen, annual authorization of revolving funds, placed on the agenda by Mr. Mark Ianello, our finance director, is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one-ninety-seven-seventeen, appropriation, educational support from Free Cash Reserve on the amount of one million twenty-four thousand six hundred, three hundred sixty-one dollars, three hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents, and insurance claim recovery on the amount of one million four hundred seventy-five thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents to the school department for a total appropriation of two point five million dollars, placed on the agenda by Mr. Mayor Rivera. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one-eighty-six-seventeen, Recreation Department, request authorization for expenditure of a gift from Dean and Flynn Incorporated on the amount of eight thousand dollars, eight thousand one hundred forty-two dollars, is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one-sixty-seven-seventeen, appropriation transfer, Lawrence Fire Department from severance to medical bills on the amount of sixty thousand dollars, Mr. Vice President and Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Budget and Finance Committee voting unanimously to send this document up with a favorable recommendation to the aforementioned transfer of medical, from severance to medical bills for the sum of sixty thousand dollars, and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Council President, take document one-sixty-eight-seventeen, also a fire department matter, out of order.
Motion has been made to take document one-sixty-eight-seventeen-
Second.
-out of order and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Chief. Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to send this document out to the full council with a favorable recommendation. It is the acceptance of a Lawrence Fire Department grant, FM Global Fire Prevention Grant Program for the sum of five thousand dollars. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Discussion, Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes, if the chief is here. Hi, chief, just want, would like for you to describe briefly what the, what the program-
Yes, Councilor, the, the FM Global grant was taken on by Lieutenant Armando, who I have in fire prevention, very aggressive young man, very well-educated. He researched the grant and applied for it. FM Global, there's a lot of fire prevention research work, they test a lot of materials on how they burn, and they insure commercial properties. As part of their business plan, they give grants to fire departments in, in what they feel is their avenue of expertise. Lieutenant Armando applied for this grant so that we can improve our inspection services with some IT equipment, so that we can have real-time inspections and update our records immediately with iPads and such, and hotspots in the field. So, this is a non-match grant, we don't have to have any matching funds for it, it's just a good free five thousand dollars.
Good. I'm glad to hear it. I know that we needed some way of supporting that, because now you could use, you could direct other monies to more direct equipment, I guess, and-
Yeah, this is good, this'll help us a lot.
-the overtime, which I know you, you've been working at reducing, but there's still some, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for describing the program.
Thank you. Since there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Document two-hundred-seventeen, resolution for the top Lawrence graduates at the following schools, Lawrence High School, Notre Dame, Chris Turey, Central Catholic High School, Greater Lawrence Technical School, and Northern Access Community College, placed on the agenda by Council Vice President Mark LaPlante, is going down to the ordinance committee. Document four-
Resolution.
-fourteen, seven, sixteen, Madam Chair, from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Councilor President. Document four-fourteen-sixteen is a Washington Street request to one-way, it come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document fifty-seven-seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a handicap park in a seventy-one Elm Street. Councilor, we can do two things with this document. The applicant has a family emergency, he was not able to submit the document that he was supposed to bring her today here, so we can either order a public hearing, or we can leave her table until he physical pass the document.
I think we should order the public hearing. And you know the person, right?
Yes, but since I made the motion pending a documentation, I have to let you know that-
Oh, I understand that.
So, we'll do, we'll do two things. The first motion we'll do is a motion to accept it as a committee report, given that it came-
With favorable recommendation pending a documentation.
Yeah, to order a public hearing.
Yeah, just to order a public hearing.
So, we'll do-
Public hearing?
Yeah, let's just order the public hearing.
And then table it.
Okay.
And the city clerk will be in the lookout for the placard, okay? So, there is a motion on the floor-
Second.
-properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Councilor.
Madam Chair, document fifty-eight-seventeen.
It's a also handicap park in a one-thirty-nine Osgo Street, and that also come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Chair, document sixty-three-seventeen.
It's a handicap park in a sixty, sixty-seven Park Street, first floor, it come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document eighty-two-seventeen. Madam Chair.
It's a stop sign on Melvin Street and Winter Street, and come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document one-hundred-seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a stop sign request, a four-way stop at the intersection of Dumpster and Exton Street, and that also come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Document one-twelve-seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a dedication of intersection of Middlebury Street and Nelson Street, Lawrence as a Jeremiah of Corner Square in honor of CD of Lawrence Patrolman Jeremiah of Corner, who was killed in line of duty on November fourteen, nineteen fifty. It came out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second-
What are we?
-to order a public hearing.
Okay.
Yes.
Nope.
No, no, we don't need to.
We don't need a public-
The motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Wait. This question.
Councilor LaPlante?
Sure, so, thank you. So, we went recently to a, to, I think, the Valley Patriot had a bash of some sort, and this was actually, one of the best parts of the entire night, was when they actually had an actual call that the police department organized to ask for Patrolman Jeremiah O'Connor, and it went over the airwaves, and it was a live call, and it was an amazingly touching moment, of course, when Officer Patrolman Jeremiah O'Connor did not respond. Obviously, he passed many years ago, but there was a certain hush that came across the room. It was very touching and very moving, because the police officers that were there, and the individuals that were there, realized there was a police officer who died in the line of duty many years ago, and finally, that officer was getting his due. And so, I just want to thank those individuals who were involved in making that evening a special evening, and making, putting this on the council agenda. All too often, our police officers, they have a tough job in the city, and they do put their lives on the line, and, and sometimes, they don't get the credit that they deserve, quite frankly, and it's only when something like this happens that we actually pause and say, oh, my gosh, absolutely, there are individuals who do these things and, and risk them their lives and run into buildings when there's fires, or chase after bad guys who've got guns, and do the things that they have to do to protect us. So, I'm very happy to support this, and I think all the individuals who brought this and found this out, that's an amazing story, too. I didn't expect to speak on this this evening, but when I saw it, I just wanted to make that brief comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes, I, I do believe that it's really important to show that we value our public safety. I know it's always difficult because of the demands that are made, but I think events like National Night Out would be a great place to begin to look at those still living and working, and giving them, you know, some kind of praise or while they're still alive. This is nice, and we should do it, because other people should know about his sacrifice. But I think we should also begin demonstrating appreciation, not only through the budget, because the budget's not the only way, you know, dollars are separate from the value that we have. I don't think how much we value them will ever amount to the amount of money that, that we, as a poor community, can offer them, but I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document one-thirteen-seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a lockup auction to prohibit the sale of marijuana in the city of Lawrence. It came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one-thirty-four-seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a stop sign, four-way stop at intersection of Cornish and Street and Exton Street, and that also come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one-forty-one-seventeen, Madam Chair.
The Love Out Loud Project, request to use the component common to hold the Walk for Love event on June third, two thousand seventeen, from nine AM to one PM, rain day, June twenty-four, and that come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Motion has been made and properly second. Discussion, Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes, is Minga Dominguez here now?
Yes.
Through you, Council President, this is a, hi, this is the first time I'm seeing the Love Out Loud Project, so I was hoping you could tell me and others about it.
So, I'm starting the Love Out Loud Project with a separate-
Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry. My name is Loida Dominguez Rosario, and my address?
Yes.
Forty-one Palom Street, Methuen, Mass. So, I am starting the Love Out Loud Project, and the walk is the beginning of that. My goal at this walk is to help change the perspective of love lives outside of us to we are love, because my belief is that we're love, and, and a lot of us are lost looking for ourselves outside, and I think that that's a lot of the disconnect that's happening all over the world. So, I have a goal to help people see that we're not our barriers or our masks, that So, I have a goal to help people see that we're not our barriers or our masks, that in essence, we're love and light.
So, that we could love our neighbors?
I'm sorry?
So, we could love our neighbors, is that what it is?
So, we.
It's not going to be a bunch of people kissing all over the place, right?
No. So, really, it's people celebrating who they are, celebrating themselves.
Loving themselves.
Yeah, celebrating ourselves as we are.
Okay. Lot of young people involved?
I, I actually want everybody, actually, I want all of you guys to come too. I think that it's, for, for me, there's a great message to, because I've been lost in my, in my life, right? Like, looking for myself outside and found myself and I want, I would love to support other people, young, old, too.
Yeah, I'm still going through an identity crisis.
Yeah, we all, we all do. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselors.
And it's a walk from love, by the way, it's not for love. From means it's, we are it, for it, we're looking for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselors, any further questions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck in your event. Document one-forty-five seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a handicap park in a twenty-two Leslie Street. And that come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second in the discussion. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document one-forty-seven seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a handicap park in a two-way Debra Street. And that come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second in the discussion. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is document one-fifty-six seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a request to establish a two-way stop on Kendall Street and King Street. And that come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second in the discussion. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document one-fifty-seven seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a transfer rental license. It come out with a favorable recommendation, all the paperwork in order, and I, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second in the discussion.
Question.
Question, Madam Chair, Madam, Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Just a quick question.
Is, is, yeah.
Counselor Reyes.
Yeah.
This is a.
Slash those ice.
Renewal?
Yes, a renewal, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Alvarez.
Counselors, any further questions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, document one-sixty-six seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a National Night Out, two thousand seventeen, citywide national night out against crime. South Common Park, South Union and Marcus, Marcus Street area, Monday, July thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, from five p.m. to eight p.m. In the block parties and neighborhoods, Colonial High Neighborhood, Cottle and Dorset Avenue, District A Neighborhood on one-sixty-five East Haver Street, Redmond Lutheran Church, Mount Vernon Neighborhood Association and Mount Vernon Park, South Common Central Neighborhood Association, TBD is Lawrence West Neighborhood Association, near one-twenty-seven Chester and Tower Hill Neighborhood, Reservoir, at Tuesday, August first, two thousand seventeen, from five p.m. to eight p.m. It come out with a favorable recommendation and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second in the discussion. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Harold. Next document is document one-sixty-nine seventeen, Madam Chair.
Children's and Friends and Family Service used the common common of mental health awareness month ice cream social on May eighteen, from five p.m. to seven p.m. That came out with a favorable recommendation and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second in the discussion. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document one-seventy-four seventeen, Madam Chair.
The ice cream truck vendor license, that also come out with a favorable recommendation and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second in the discussion. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The last one, one-seventy, one-seventy-five.
One more.
One.
One-seventy-five.
So.
Four, he may.
Yeah.
She said four, one, five.
Okay, please note that we did approve this document, but the, the food inspection.
No, that's the one-seventy-five, the next document over.
The next document, yes.
That's the, the next document, yeah.
Okay. So, Counselors, one-seventy-five seventeen, Madam Chair.
It's a transfer vendor license. They come out with no recommendation due to pending, okay, I think she has it.
She has, okay.
Yeah.
It's right here.
That's what she needs it. Counsel Maldonado, you want to, since you were part of this, you want to take a pic? That was the lady who.
No, I remember that.
Yeah.
But they were supposed to bring some paperwork?
This is.
Oh, that's the paperwork already?
Yeah, that's what she was on. Counsel Rodriguez. That was the document that we was request for her to have.
Yes, okay.
Okay? So, can I get a motion to approve now?
To motion.
To approve?
You made a motion to approve.
Yes.
So, is, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second in its discussion. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, document. Now, going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one-seventy-two seventeen, Mr. Vice President and Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you very much, Council President. The Budget and Finance Committee, after great deliberation, made a motion to send this up with a favorable recommendation. This is the Airport Department Garage Roof Repair Safety and Maintenance Program Grant. The sum that the, the, that the, we're looking to receive is the sum of a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars from the state grant. I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made and properly, is a second.
Second.
And properly second, any discussion?
Uh, just one, one question.
Counsel Alvarez, Counselor Maldonado.
Mr. Plant, it was noticed here that the, it was increased, it was amended from one, a hundred and four to one-fifty-one?
Correct, Mr. Maldonado, through you, Mr. President. The, the require, the, the speaker is correct that during the presentation by the airport director, he made mention that he's a bit of an overachiever and we were able to get a little bit more money for that grant than was initially requested. So, that's the new amount.
Now, the a hundred and twenty thousand will come from the state, am I correct?
That is correct.
And the rest will be paid by?
I don't know if there's any monies coming out of the, out of the airport itself, but the motion before us is whether or not to accept the grant. But I'll, it's through you, Mr. President, it's okay, we have the airport director here to be more precise in answering the question.
Could even Mr. Miller?
Mr. President, through you, Counselor, it's an eighty-twenty split. Eighty percent is coming from the state, twenty percent is coming from the airport's funds. We set up a project account and what happened was the bids came in higher than was anticipated. I contacted the state, they agreed to increase their share. And we've got the difference that we needed, it's about six thousand dollars in our operating budget. So, the twenty percent that the city is responsible for is contained within the operating budget of the airport.
Okay, so, the actual cost is a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Correct.
A hundred and twenty thousand will be paid by the state and the rest will come from.
Come from our revenue, that's correct.
No more questions?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselors, any further questions?
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
I guess just to clarify, those are matching funds.
It, it's not quite matching, you could say it's matching. When we program these grants, these are an eighty-twenty split grant. So, we've programmed it as part of our capital improvement project last year. So, it was funded through the budget. So, it is matching and, so to speak, but it's coming out of the revenues that we expected to have to allocate towards it. It's not a surprise.
Okay. And just take a minute to congratulate you for the great job that you do there.
Uh, thank you.
And I know that.
I represent a very competent board and staff of employees and I want to thank the city council as well because with your support, we're able to be successful in that of the administration. So, I may represent the airport, but there's a lot of us that are working in the right direction.
Yeah, and the board members have been very happy with you throughout the years. And I'm glad that the airport has been able to grow so much. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, seeing there's no further questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now, the Housing Committee reports. Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee, document sixty-eight oh-nine.
The Housing Committee met and discussed that item sixty, sixty-eight oh-nine. Basically, we send this item with no recommendation to this board, to the city council, and I would like to make a motion to accept it as a, as a committee report.
Motion, motion has been made to accept it as a committee report, is a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Discussion, Counsel Rodriguez.
So, this item is a, is a lot, that it was a dispossession of this lot of four thousand square feet. The assessment value for this, for this, for this lot is about, it's five thousand, four hundred dollars. And it was, the dispossession was done to, to Nunez LLC, located in thirty-one Mary McStreet, Lawrence, Massachusetts. The main point of this, of this lot is to have it as a driveway for another property that he is one of the, a boarder shop to the location. Eventually, opening up in all the project that is coming up, that is going to be, it's going to be developed and actually, once we, they have all the proper permit. At this point, we discussing the, the lot of four thousand square feet to Nunez LLC. And I would like to make a motion to, as, to approve, to accept the purchase or the sell of this lot.
We, we, we have a motion to accept the committee report.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we take, we need to take a vote on it to accept.
On the, yes, I'm sorry, never mind.
So, is there any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor to approve the committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counselors, can we please get a motion to approve this document?
Uh, I would like to make a motion to approve the document.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, discussion, Counsel LaPlante.
One of the questions during the, but during the Housing Committee was what was this particular property zoned as? And I was wondering if that was an answer from the administration on that question.
This property is in a B-two district, business district.
To go through you, Mr. President, through, because these questions, we couldn't have answered the Housing Committee. So, to go forward on this process, would there need to be a requirement to go before the zoning board of appeals for a waiver? Or are they by right allowed to go ahead and, and build what needs to be built on this?
For the, for the spot of land that we're selling, if you're talking about the bigger project, they most likely will have to go for Conservation Commission for the setbacks.
Just the conservation of the ZVA?
No. It's in a business district.
And so, this is strictly for the parcel. Is this, is this parcel required for there to be that project?
Um, and it'll make it look better because it'll have a pointed entrance and exit. And it's, it's very useful for us. The city has owned this lot for, for many years, so we're selling it to the abater to make their project more viable, to make it look better.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes. I must launch through you, Council President. Who is the buyer?
The buyer is, is Nunez LLC. It's a limited liability corporation located in, right here in Lawrence, Mary McStreet.
Is the first name Alberto?
Yes.
And he's, um, he has a lot of properties and he's done really good job with those properties.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and he's been a person that always is making community contributions. Anybody, he helps out.
Yeah.
And I've seen him in action and I think this is a wonderful thing. And if he says that, that's what's going to happen. I believe that that's exactly what's going to happen.
Yeah, this is going to be a great project in a not used area that, with a lot of illegal dumping. So, we're looking forward to what he's going to build there.
But it's not a situation like we've had in the past, that we tell people, this is what you're expected to do. Nothing happens, but years go on, you know, and by the time we have learned of it, either there's a limitation on what we can do by law or something.
Yes.
So, just like with the, what I was talking about, the house, the universal handicap accessibility was supposed to be built in the house, it's never been built.
Yeah.
And it's now, the lot is being used as a source of income by allowing people to park there.
Yeah, and that, we're actually, I'm actually going to bring that particular property to you guys later on.
Thank you. And the reason why it's sad is because at the time, there was another group, a neighborhood group, that wanted to do something there for the children.
Yeah.
Because they're so far away from actual parks.
Yeah.
And the only thing they could, if they walked down that way, that's where all the mostly grown men are playing baseball
and stuff.
And there isn't a real place for them. And all they wanted was the hoop and, you know, cleaning up the, the lot.
Yeah.
And putting tar over it. And, and we suggested that there might be another area more appropriate for building than that particular lot.
Yeah.
But I just hope that when it comes to housing, back to housing, that we can put it into appropriate use.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselors, any further discussions? As a district counselor from this neighborhood, I, I am strongly in support of this. I've seen the work that has been currently done. Even though Mr. Nunez is under no obligation to take care of this particular piece of land, he, he, he has been cleaned up. And I, he has always served as an opportunity for illegal dumping, but now it has been properly maintained under no obligation. But not only that, the, the property which abuts this one directly was also a dumping ground for the city of Lawrence. And as soon as it was purchased by the, the current owner, Mr. Nunez, it has been completely cleaned up and is no longer an eyesore and, and an opportunity to, you know, have drug activities and prostitution going on in, in that part of the, the neighborhood. So, I do appreciate the, the big effort that has been going on to, to ensure and beautify the, the neighborhood, which is in a lot of need. So, I strongly support this document tonight. Counselors, any further questions or discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one-sixty-three oh-nine, Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yes, once again, the Housing Committee met and discussed the item one-sixty-three oh-nine and voted in favor to resent a prior disposition for this property. The, the, that disposition took place, took, took place on September eighteen, two thousand twelve. And what happened with this property, well, I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second, discussion, Counsel Rodriguez.
What happened with this property on twenty-seven Bennet Street? The city have made a tremendous effort to get this person to pay for this specific lot that is about two thousand, four hundred dollars. The person haven't been able during, during all those years to make a payment on this for any specific reason. The city have sent Mr., Mr. Ramirez several letters, thirty-five letters specifying and, and actually saying that payment need got to be made and the closing have to be, have to happen. It never happened before, before. So, the Housing Committee recommend this, this council to resent the prior disposition for the, for this specific property.
Right. Question?
So, oh, by the way, before, before you took the, the floor, I would like to add something through you, Council President.
Sure, Mr.?
Also, that Mr. Ramirez send a letter to us, asking us for three to four weeks as an ex, as a, as a, as a forgiveness and period. But if we take a vote tonight, any, anything could be done for four weeks. So, that's why we recommend to resent the prior disposition of this property. And obviously, it's going to take, it's going to, any effect is going to be take place after four weeks. Thank you, Mr. President.
So, Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez, Counsel LaPlante.
Yes, um, we, I, I think I agree. Yes, I think I agree wholeheartedly with the decision of the committee. People, we have to get serious with people. And like I said, we have in the past missed the boat on making sure that people are doing what they said they were going to do with the property or even making sure that we receive proper payment for the property. So, I wholeheartedly agree with this. I think it's time for us to get serious and that the people who come before us looking to take advantage of a good price and a good, you know, lot should come here with the wisdom that we're playing no games.
Thank you, Council Alvarez Rodriguez. Councilor LaPlante.
Through you, Mr. President. So, I just want to make sure I understand the chairman's comments correctly. So, this is a vote to rescind. We do offer, if I understand your motion correctly, there is an opportunity for the applicant to do what it takes, i.e. a closing within the four weeks. If that closing does not take place, substantial progress does not take place, then the rescension language is in effect and that individual does not have the right to go ahead and then close. That's a four-week hard window and then the city can go ahead and then look at potential other applicants for the property. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. That's exactly what it is.
Thank you very much.
What is there now? What are they doing with it?
They do it in parking. They just parking.
Parking people?
They use it as a green space in parking. So, it's part of their property right now because it was, they're using it.
For other cars to be parked there?
Yeah.
As a business?
Their own cars. And they just have a fence there and everything. So, they're using it as theirs, but they haven't made a payment.
You know, I wonder if we shouldn't be thinking about getting people who are doing this with the lots to become licensed as a business.
I don't think that they're utilizing it for parking space in their property.
Just for parking, just for parking their own cars.
Oh, their own parts?
For their own parking space.
Okay. But we know, because I've seen other lots where people are using it, collecting money for people who are parking in that lot. And before it gets crazy, maybe we should start thinking about whether those places should be properly licensed or what. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Alvarez Rodriguez. Any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 9A15, Mr. Chair.
Yes, document 9A15 is a, well, we met and discussed that to approve the sale of this lot. There was, this was an RPF or an option, a bidding war on this lot. And we have three bidders between $25,000 to $70,000. The city chose the higher bidder and we would like to send, well, recommend to this board to approve the sale of Berkeley Street and Manchester Street lot. And I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Council Madonado, Council LaPlante.
Mr. Rodriguez, can you mention the three higher bidders, please?
We don't have the name of the three higher bidders, but we have the higher bidder here.
Oh, you have the higher bidder?
Yeah, which is $70,000.
How much?
$70,000.
$70,000?
By the way, the assessment value of this property is $4,000, is 4,500 square feet. It's currently a vacant lot and it's located, like I said before, in Berkeley and Manchester Street on that corner, almost in front of La Fruteria.
Councilor LaPlante.
Yeah, through you, Mr. President. May I call Ms. St. Orange?
Ms. St. Orange?
I just want to confirm, once we heard in the housing committee, there is no need to go before the ZVA for what this applicant is looking to do with this property that we are disposing to them? That is correct? That's correct? That has not changed?
It has not. It's actually in a B1 district, so it does not need to go in front of zoning.
So, by right, after the purchase, he can go ahead and build what he proposes to build here?
Yes.
Through you, Mr. President. Okay, thank you.
Through you, Council President.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
I just have a question. Ms. St. Orange, through you, Council President. Do you know how many bidders?
Yes, we received a total of four bids. The highest was 70, the second highest was 60,000, then 45,000, and the lowest was 25,000.
So, how, it seems that, that's a very attractive lot.
Yeah, it's, the market's really good right now in the city. The lot is right on Main Street, on Manchester Street. They're proposing to build a duplex, owner, one side owner and then rental. So, it's a good lot, but we did not expect it to be that high.
Well, I think it's amazing. I think it's great. And what do they plan to do there again?
They're going to do a two-family home duplex style, two and a half bathrooms each, three bedrooms each, with off-street parking for four vehicles.
And who is the developer?
Kenneth Thayer.
Kenneth Thayer. Any particular organization?
He, we've sold many other city properties to him. He builds properties within six months. He's a really good builder in the city.
So, he's just an individual that lets this kind of work?
Yes, and he's also offering to, once he sells the property, to offer a 5% discount to a Lawrence resident off the market value. So, he's also going to help a Lawrence resident purchase this home, once it's built.
Once he builds it, what happens?
He will sell it to, if he sells it to a person who lives in Lawrence, he'll offer a 5% discount to that person of the market rate of the house.
So, it's not exactly affordable housing?
Yes.
But it will be at market rate? Okay.
Council Rodriguez.
Sure, I just want to congratulate this developer because he is offering 5% discount to a possible buyer if the person live in Lawrence. So, that's something that is good to mention.
Thank you. Council Madonado.
Lisa, this property had been sold before.
Yeah, so I came in front of you to rescind that vote a while ago. So, we had tried to sell it to the aborder for parking for $100 square foot, so $4,500 just for parking. She moved to Haverhill, so we came in and rescinded that vote and we looked at it again and we thought maybe we should do a request for proposal and put a house there too, just because it's such an open space on a Main Street.
Good idea.
Council Ortiz.
I'm looking here at the papers that you submitted and the zoning says R3. Is there something that you amended to put the correct zoning?
I'm not sure.
I don't have it in my papers.
I'm not sure if I sent an amendment one, but I did change it. It's definitely a B1. It's showing on a zoning map. There was actually two lots there. One was R3 and one was B1. So, when the assessor merged it, it turned it into R3, but I did confirm that it's a B1. So, I'll amend that document.
That'd be great.
Councilors, any further discussions or questions? And just out of, for purposes of disclosure, the builder will be the Thayer Group.
Yes.
And the other applicants were Bryant Builders of Londonderry, Lisette Matos, and Lawrence Family Development Youth Bill. Councilors, can I, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 17017, Mr. Chair.
Yes, the Housing Committee discussed the item 17017. This is a surplus declaration and we voted in favor of it unanimously. And we recommend to this board to accept the surplus declaration and I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 17117.
We have the same situation with 17117. This is a surplus declaration of 5 Spruce Street. And we discussed all the possible issues with the lot and we actually voted in favor of sending it to this council. And I would like to, with a favorable recommendation, I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Discussion?
This document is actually going down to the Housing Committee. It's going to the Housing Committee.
No, 171?
It's coming back? It's coming back, okay.
Coming back, yes.
So, motion has been made and is properly second. Discussion, Council Madonado.
5 Spruce Street, is there a city garden there right now or is that the lot next to the?
It's the lot right at the corner of?
Is it at the corner?
Yes, right at the last one, basically. You have them up there.
Okay, because there is a, currently there is a garden there, a vegetable garden there that the neighbors are using.
This is, this lot is right at the bridge, at the Spigot River line, not at the garden. So, you pass the garden and then you?
It's not the corner lot?
No.
It's the one next door on the left-hand side?
Yeah.
No, no.
The one next to the bridge. The one right next to the bridge at the Spigot River on Spruce Street, as you're turning into Dacey.
Right at the edge of the Spigot River?
Yes, so there's?
It's right at the edge of, basically, it's at the Spigot River, kind of.
So, it's a very small, it's not even noticeable as a public lot. It appears to be part of the current property, which is a triple decker. It's currently white. So, when you go over the bridge, as soon as you see the first property there, it is literally right next to that property. So, it does not appear to be a separate lot.
So, is the Spigot River the lot and then there is the house? And then there is, and then there's the community garden?
Okay.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
I would be, yeah, I would be concerned about putting more structures on there after, you know, what we suffered during the floods.
I don't think we will be able to build in that location, yeah.
So, once, through you, Council President. Once we have that in front of us in the Housing Committee, we're going to be discussing any possible sale in terms of construction or green space. Right now, we're just declaring it as a surplus.
Okay, any further discussion?
Not just that, yes, I know I'm familiar with that. But I also want people to take into consideration in the deliberations that we had a very, very horrific experience with the flooding in the past. We have worked with and with the Mass Environmental and Federal Environmental Agencies and even FEMA to talk about what to do with those properties down there. And we talked at length about how important it would be to not put too many structures around those so that the waters, should they be a flood?
Yeah.
The waters could run through it, et cetera. So, since I'm not a member of your committee, I'm just letting you know that I would like you guys to include that in your discussions.
Through you, Council President.
Yes, sir.
Council Rodriguez.
Once we, well, looking from the bigger perspective, the conservation department, they always work around the Spigot River with a 100-foot buffer, which is basically, it's going to allow, anything that is within that 100 feet is not going to be pretty much allowed. But that's another, something that eventually?
Currently, this lot is non-buildable. We're not going to be able to build in it.
That's for sure. The lot is about 5,000 square feet. It's not big enough. And once they work with a 100-foot buffer, nothing much is going to?
People do try to squeeze in.
Yeah, they won't be, it's not, the lot is currently non-buildable. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Councilors, we have a few documents to take off the table here. Let's see which one will be fastest. I think Mr. Joel Lopez will probably be the fastest. Document 14817. Can I please get a motion to take document 14817 out of table?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So, 14817. Document 14817 is Joel Lopez Viva Var requesting to expand its sitting, providing outside sitting at 179 Excess Street. This document was previously table pending a recommendation by our city engineer. We received a memo from the city engineer and I will veto for the record. He says, "Dear Council President, I have reviewed the documents submitted by the Law Office of Author Broadhurst on behalf of Mr. Joel Lopez and Viva Var located at 179 Excess Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts. The information submitted, layout plans, P1, P2, were reviewed for ADA compliance and general constructibility. No issues were found during my review and I have no further recommendations." With that, can I please get a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next, we have document, I think this is 23716, is the amendment to the taxi, Lawrence Taxi Ordinance. Councilors, can I please get a motion to take off the table?
So move. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. 23716. So, that is the amendment to the Lawrence Taxi Cap Ordinance. Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 23716 is the Hackney Division. It submitted the following proposals to amend the stated section of chapters 5.48 taxi caps and other vehicles for hire. It was based on the agenda by Officer Flores. We actually have a motion to approve pending at this level. Councilors, any further discussion? Council Madonado, Council LaPlante.
Officer Flores, a couple of years ago, we made a change to the ordinance, taking away the power of the police department to sell medallions.
Transfer?
To transfer and things like that. Is this change to go back again?
No, it's still the same.
Ah, it's still the same?
It's still the same.
Okay, so the council will still have the power to?
Yes. That was sent up to Charles Body and he sent it back. I have, I don't know if he sent you the copy, but he sent it to me. I don't think that you, that one's on for today.
That's not the final one.
I don't think you, I don't think that one made it to you.
We don't have the final one.
Right, so I could hold this for, we have another one for the city ordinance coming up. On the next city council meeting, send it to ordinance. We can send this to ordinance.
You want this to go back to ordinance?
No, not, no, the one that Charles Body sent.
That's this one here?
No.
No.
That has nothing to do with transfers. That one has nothing to do with transfers.
So, we don't have?
He does, I believe he didn't send, did not send it down to the city clerk.
If I may, Council President, what the officer is talking about is in between the time that the motion to amend was made at the last meeting and today, on May 10th, the city attorney sent down another amendment, which I was just discussing with Council President, which you may want to discuss after the motion to approve is allowed or consider any action including that amendment. It has not been included in the public hearing notice. It has not been before the council yet.
Are you suggesting that we need another public hearing?
It may, it may require a separate, and I discussed that with the city attorney, who suggests that a separate public hearing would be necessary and subject to the Council President and your approval, that a new document be created, sent down to the ordinance committee for vetting and then returned back with an order for public hearing or an order? Per your pleasure, it's not part of what's subject to the motion to approve. But again-
Then we have to amend it.
It could be, I don't, you know, whatever the council's pleasure may be.
That amendment, Mr. Clerk, is going to affect the document that there's already a motion for, right?
So, yeah.
No.
No, not necessarily. It's a different-
It's an entirely different subsection of the-
It is.
Of the, of the taxi ordinance, which is five four eight nine three zero.
Yeah.
Which is, again, totally separate from what was published and what is before the council for a motion to amend. I asked the city attorney, he suggests that it may not be possible to amend what's before the council now, that it may have to go by rule of being in a, a separate document.
And it'll be added.
And then added later.
So my, my recommendation to the, the council will be that, that if the council decides to either approve or deny the, the motion that is currently on the floor, exclude that portion, which we could add to the council agenda and follow this, the, the process for, for the amendment portion, because the amendment has not been published. It's information that it's brand-new to all of us, it has not been reviewed. Me personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable either voting it, voting in favor or against it, because I haven't had the opportunity to review it. So my recommendation will be that we, whichever way we, we will prefer to go in, in regards to the original document, we make a determination, or if we want to keep it longer, whatever the council decides. But for the new portion, the amendment of five point forty-eight nine thirty, which is the authorization to arrest and seize evidence in, in its entirety, we, we don't take action on it tonight. I think that, that it will be premature on our behalf to make a decision on something we are hearing on for the first time. And we follow the, the same process we do, we usually do for any new ordinance, so.
There's no urgency, right?
So, if there is no further questions or discussion, Councilor La Plan at the floor.
No, actually, yeah.
It was-
Councilor Maldonado, you have any further questions?
Yeah, and then, and me.
No.
No, okay, Councilor La Plan.
Through you, Mr. President, Officer Flores, welcome.
Good evening, Council.
So here's my pragmatic question of the evening.
Yes.
Why are we even bothering with this?
Uh, this-
Uh, wait, am I done with that question yet? Because, because we have Uber and Lyft, which are unregulated.
What is it?
Uber?
Yes.
Lyft?
It's, it's totally different.
Is he, okay, because this is a, there's Hackneys, Cavs, Liverys. Help me understand.
Okay. For the city, any, any business do with a livery service, the, for example, Uber, Lyft, there's other resources out there, just not Uber or Lyft. Those companies are already mandated. They, they cover their charges through a bank system. The driver of Uber, Lyft do not collect cash. It's all through a bank account. They don't, right now, they don't accept TIPS. Soon they will be, but it has to go through the account, okay? In a city livery service, what we want to stay away from is a livery service trying to become a taxi cab company. So that's why we're, I make, one of the changes I have here on the five point four eight point zero, one zero, there's a, there's a new section that I wanted to add, which would be number eleven, on that section, that requires all livery companies, once they are approved by the city council, that they have to provide the Hackney unit a written service agreement from a company. Which this, does not, any agreement from a service company, it's, it's paid by check. There's no cash involved. So you don't accept cash, you're not a taxi service.
What's the utility of having the city council involved in this?
And this is the, this is an amendment to the city ordinance.
I understand, but we're talking about amending it, so what's the utility of having the city council involved? Why can't the police department one-stop shopping, made the determination? Do they have everything they need? Can they process it all? Why is the council involved in this?
This, this is-
Or should we be, should we remain involved in it?
Correct.
Of course we should be.
But any changes in city, has to be, has to go through the city council for changes in amendments.
Sure.
The only reason that this is here before you is because as, I've been doing this for now, I took it over in two thousand fourteen, and from two thousand fourteen to present, these are things that were not there, which are tools that I can use for enforcement. And this came about with a livery service that was opened in the city, and where I had the attorney, the first time I ever had someone come with an attorney to open a livery service. And he mentioned, well, why do they need a, a service agreement? It's not in your city ordinance. And I told, well, we, we do request an agreement, a service agreement, because we don't want to make sure it's not operated as a taxi cab company. This is why this is before you.
Okay, my last question, I wasn't clear. This entire taxi cab situation is a partnership essentially, it's a two-step process. Police department goes through it, you give the recommendations, you come before, the police department comes before us and says, these are the renewals, here are the cabs, either they're looking to renew, or maybe a transfer of medallions, which I think are losing their value over time, whatever. But the question is, is what utility do we bring to this? Why should the council remain involved in this process? Why should we keep, if we're evaluating this process, can the city police department handle this unilaterally without involving the city council? It's more of a policy question.
Yes, well, that, that is, it, it is the policy that this comes before the city council.
I'm asking you-
But that's, I mean, as, if we should take it over?
Yeah.
I don't, don't agree with that.
Why?
Because that will, no conflict of interest.
What do you mean? Go a little deeper.
With any, with any applicant. So there's always a process. My recommendation, and it comes here. Well, actually, my recommendation goes to the chief of police, then comes here. So it's just not my recommendation, it's just not my decision to make.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Thank you, Council President. Officer Flores, I think you have done an excellent job-
Thank you.
At, you know, making sure that we progress and do not stay stagnant with the issues of the taxis and liveries we've got. We had no way of regulating them before. Now we have, taxis have to have the same color, or the livery, you know, the companies have to have the same colors. We've been regulating a part of it, and this part, people don't know, but Officer Flores and shared with me and with Councilor Reyes, that he was frustrated with people coming to him and saying, no, I, I, I should get it, no, I should get it, no. And he no longer wanted to be in that position. So bringing it to the council then provides him with the support that he needs, and he doesn't need to get into any debates or arguments with lawyers or anyone else. So that's the good reason why the council is still involved and should remain involved.
Correct.
Yeah. And just lastly, with the, with this new piece, it doesn't mean that we're gonna increase the number of medallions, right?
No.
Everything remains the same, except for, whether the, if you completely outline.
The, and some of these, there, there are only changes that are important on here is, there's a fine on accepting a hail, which is five point four eight point seven twenty. That's going up from one hundred to three hundred.
Right.
And then there's another portion here, which came about because of a court case. And if we look at five point four eight point zero seven five, assignment of a, of medallions, the, the change in that section is to add that the Hackney Division should have the right to select from the most qualified applicant, Hackney Division, so discretion in accordance with the section five point four eight point zero five, seven five and five point four eight point two zero zero of this chapter. Such selection by the Hackney Division should be conditioned until approval by the chief of police. That means when there is a medallion available, what happened was that medallion, that was a court case where the medallion was revoked.
Right.
And it was in limbo for two years. So it was finally issued with, to the best applicant, and that came with the, from the chief of police, with his approval.
Right.
The, the other one that also is a court case is- would be the sale, et cetera, of vehicle for hire license, which is five point four eight point one nine zero, which would be asserting and adding in that section that the chief of police should have the right to temporarily reissue or reassign a medallion at his or just, or her discretion, pending the outcome of such criminal case. At times, such criminal case is closed with finding of not guilty, dismissal, no process outcome. Said medallion should be returned to the original holder immediately. This, what happened was that the holder of this medallion had a criminal case, so while the case was pending, the medallion was stopped. So at a request to keep the medallion running, it was temporarily issued to the company and continued service, depending on the outcome of the case.
Case, mhm.
Actually, that was a good outcome, it was dismissed, and the medallion was returned back to the, the owner.
And that's certainly a process or practice that we should adopt, and it's part of this, what you've presented to us. Lastly, you know that we hear a lot, the councilors hear a lot, from the citizens about our constituents, about frustrations with the cabs who are honking too much, or who are violating certain other local laws. And I think that's another interesting piece that we bring to the table when we're discussing whether a particular livery or taxi should be given the privilege to renew their license.
Correct.
All right, thank you so much, Officer Flores.
You're welcome.
I think you've done a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilor Rodriguez?
How you doing, Officer Flores?
Good evening, Council.
So going through the changes you're proposing here, how many in total there are? Just to make sure, to clarify.
And the changes would be one-
You have the transfer.
Cause it's, it's repetitive, it's showing you the, the actual chapter and section that's there now, and then it's showing you the one that's-
So you're deleting some of the order?
Yes, it's, it's, it's actually deleting it and just adding it back on with the proposal.
And you say that that's gonna help you on terms of enforcing the, the ordinance?
Yes.
Can you go through the changes very quick?
Let, let's start from the beginning and this, this, this is real quick. If you look at five point four eight point zero one zero, it's definitions for livery service, livery vehicles. These are all the rules and regulations for livery. And it explains to the applicant what is a livery. The only section, the only part that wasn't in there was that, after upon a, the city council approval, they'll have thirty days to submit a service agreement contract, or they cannot open up the company.
Okay.
This, this will-
Was because of an issue that happened with one of the-
No, this is because sometimes a livery service, a company might ask them that they need to have a license first in order to be contracted. So they'll have a thirty day to do that. This also will not allow them to operate as a taxi, which is the main concern in the city.
Mhm, yes.
On the second one, which is the five point four eight point zero seven five assignment of medallions, I went, I went through that. That was when we, someone's, medallion is revoked, taxi medallion, the, will look for applicants, will submit applications, and we have the, the Hackney unit will have the right to choose from the most qualified applicant-
The police department?
At the approval of the chief of police.
It's gonna be approved by the chief of police and, and, and so sequentially approved by the, approved by the council, or just the transfer?
It's by the chief of police.
So that's not-
That's if it's a revocation. It's not a transfer. I believe our transfers will still remain here.
Yes. So and why that doesn't go through the same process as a transfer? Because I believe it will be more, more adequate and clear to the community that, that we follow in one process.
What happened with this one?
Transfer or-
Right, what happened with this revoked medallion, it stayed in the same company. It wasn't, it wasn't open to the public. That, that one stayed in the, in the company, and it was chose, the, the most qualified applicant in that company was chosen.
So do you not, you not, well, now you're-
Meaning that it's, it's not, it's not a transfer that I want to transfer my medallion to you, or this, this is the, the police department, which is reissuing this medallion back in service, to keep it in service.
But once that happened, one needs revoke, correct?
Yes, that, and that medallion, there was no, remember that this was, when this happened, it was still in, the police department did the transfers.
So basically, okay, let me, let me go back. When the chief of police, it's, it's, it's making the decision by itself and not with the city council approval, when, when is that? To be clear with that, I know the transfer come here-
Not a transfer.
But when is that?
That would be, that would be a revocation to keep the medallion in service.
So if it's gonna change names, like I mean-
It, it would, because it's gonna, it's gonna be-
That's not considering a transfer?
Well, you, you can consider a transfer. It's, it's not a transfer, because it's a revocation.
But what I'm seeing is that-
The transfer, the transfer involves two parties.
Yeah, but I mean, but what I'm seeing is, if we go deep into the issue, is that I can add somebody in my company just to do that transfer?
To get revoked?
It doesn't have to go through the, through the city council.
No one in the company will have the medallion revoked.
I mean, not, not the police department, it could, it could, it could be, if you, if, if that, if-
No, I, I, I don't know if you read it, Councilor, it's, this is, this is pertaining to any criminal matter in court.
Okay.
It, it's really what it, it boils down to.
All right.
So it's not that someone can come up and say, can I get my license, my medallion revoked? No one's gonna ask to get their medallion revoked.
No, 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 but I mean, that's basically, if we revoke a, a medallion and we give it to the same company, I mean, it's, that's kinda like, you know, I don't know.
Well, actually, this would, this would, if, if, the city council is gonna pertain, keep the transfers, so as I was saying, this, the, the police department had that power then.
At that moment, yeah.
So to answer your question, would it come back over here? Most likely it will just come back over here anyway, cause you do the, you'll have the last authority. last, uh, authority on this.
I'm just wondering if we can add a consistent process for the transfer or any other particular...
Right, well, it changes because, well, if, if you see it, it changes, it changed back when Counselor Maldonado requested that all transfers be being, so it would come back here anyway.
Right.
But what I'm saying is that this will give the, us and the Chief of Police the authority to sign and then with the, the, the last approval would be here.
All right, let me ask you a, a quick question. Maybe you don't, you don't, uh, you don't have the answer right now. But how many, how many of those situation, not the revoke, but how many of those situation have you done in the last two years?
It'll be, it, this will be two.
Two? So that is not necessarily for revocation but for any other reason?
Right. For just a revocation in, uh, in a criminal matter in court. That the, uh, medallion was, uh, stopped.
All right, all right. What's the other change that you think it will take effect?
Excuse me?
What's the, the third one?
So, uh, continuing, it'll be section five point four eight point one seven zero B.
Yes.
Okay? Which will be the, um, adding a new section to, uh, one seven zero, which is section B, which would be vehicle medallion transfer fee. As you, as you're aware, there is only a, a, uh, new medallion fee issue. So this was never there, so this is something new. The trans, uh, and it states, uh, vehicle medallion transfer fees. The transfer fee for any medallion should be two hundred and fifty dollars and shall be due and payable to the City of Lawrence upon the transfer of the medallion. This fee will be non-refundable and only in money order.
Uh...
This will take care of any transfers. The city right now has, does not get anything for a transfer.
Yes, and that have to come...
That was something that, uh, Counselor Maldonado...
That have to come in front of the city council.
Correct.
All right.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Are you done, Mr. uh...
No, not done, but I can take the question.
Hold on one second, Mr. Maldonado. On that particular item, just on that particular item, the fine is equal to the, is equal to, is the same amount as the fee, as the transfer fee.
Which, what are you talking about?
The fine is the same amount as the transfer fee.
The fine?
Fine, what do you mean fine?
On five point four eight point one seven B.
Yes, the, the fine stays anything in, I see what you're saying, yes, the fine is still the same.
It's the same.
Mhm. Two fifty?
What would be the incentive not to pay?
Because that medallion will be, will be suspended.
No, but what I'm saying is that if the fine is equal to the transfer fee, then the person can hold from paying that transfer fee until they get the fine, then they pay the two hundred and fifty and they get the transfer.
No, well, that fine, it is continuous, so what, what would, would happen if they do not pay that, um, first of all, they're gonna have to pay because I will not give up a medallion without the payment.
So they have to pay the, uh, transfer fee plus the two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, fine?
No, not the fine. It's just in vi- any violation. Is, I, I think you're, you're confusing it.
Violation of one of these...
Uh, which section are you reading? The...
It's numbered, but I think it's page five.
I would, I wouldn't even look at that because there won't be no violation as, uh, for any issuance of a medallion unless I have all the paperwork in front of me that medallion doesn't, and then once the final approval at the...
You have to have a care.
They would have to come.
Okay.
Sorry. Now, and then, uh, you have two more, right?
Yes. This one we went through, um, just a few minutes ago, also five point four eight one ninety, the sale of vehicle for higher license entirely. This is also the reissuance of a medallion, which will come back again over here. That's, that's all it is, is that it gives it the Chief of Police to issue a medallion and keep it in circulation, keep it running instead of being suspended while someone's waiting for a criminal process.
Right.
So if this were to ever change hands, it would come back to the city council. There is another section here, which is five point four eight point six zero, the use of alcohol controlled substance.
That's important.
Prohibited entirely. This section is just being, uh, the only thing that's added on there, which is, was, was not, and I've, I've had a lot of complaints from the citizens where taxi cabs are being used to transport liquor. So now this would be added, that, uh, no, no driver while on duty or off duty in a taxi can transport liquor.
All right, no more questions, Counselor.
Okay, Counselors.
Can you move the question, Mr. President?
Yeah. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we, we do have a, um, another document, which is part of, uh, the amendment as we discussed earlier. Counselors, we have the opportunity to add it to the agenda tonight or do you just wanna go to the...
Can you add it tonight and it took...
Go through the process.
Yeah?
As the president, go through the process.
Okay, so we'll, we'll assign a, a document number for next meeting.
Send it to the ordinance.
Send it to the ordinance committee.
When's the next one?
Two oh seven seventeen, if you sign, refer to ordinance.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, Counselors, are there any other items that you wish to take off the table? Are you here for any particular documents, sir? One fifty two seventeen. So that is the covenant placed on parcel of land. Counselors, can I please get a motion to take document one fifty two seventeen out of table?
So move.
Second, motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? One, two, three.
One fifty two seventeen.
Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document one fifty two seventeen is a covenant placed on parcel, on, on a parcel of land thirty four, thirty six Burke Street, requested to, request to, uh, removed. It's what, it was placed on the agenda by John, John Tarchi. This document was tabled at the, at the full council during our last meeting. Let me, if you give me one second, Counselors, I'll give you some more information on it. We have no motion pending on it. Uh, I'm trying to find the... So the, the committee report came without a recommendation pending information of review and recommendation from Don McCarthy, uh, the Office of Planning and Development and the zoning board.
Right.
Uh, the petitioner was notified, uh, of this information prior to, to our next meeting. Uh, he, and he was tabled at the full council. Who made the motion to table?
Motion tabled was Counselor Reyes.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Reyes can, I recalled the document, I just cannot remember all the details.
We don't have the report.
We don't have the report that we request.
Still waiting for reports.
Was she waiting for Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm through, you, Counselor President. I think that McCarthy sent the report, but we're still waiting for two other reports.
From the zoning board of appeals?
Yep.
And...
That's what I remember too. Yep.
Okay.
There was no information provided at the time, it was a, a straight motion to table.
Okay.
No discussion had at this level.
Okay. So Counselor Maldonado?
Do we know what the covenant is and why the request to remove it? What is the, what is the purpose of the request to remove the covenant?
So the request...
Well, it was placed in the first place.
I know this is, um, you have the document here? Okay, so the... So the, the interesting thing of this is that there were two properties, there, there were two separate properties originally. And, and there was a lot that had been purchased by, uh, the Tarchi family.
Okay.
But then there was another larger vacant property, uh, that was owned by the City of Florence and it was also purchased by the, by James Tarchi. So one, the, the, all the, the first lot, which is smaller, it was purchased from the Andover Savings Bank by James and Steve Tarchi, so that had no connection directly with the city. But there was a home that was constructed and the city has no records, uh, of this property being built, uh, in, in...
They built it without permits?
According, according to the documentation we received from Mr. McCarthy, no records exist on our end about this particular building, uh, being constructed.
There is a building there now?
There is a building, according to my information.
And there is no record, not, no record that a permit was obtained to build?
Uh, in, according to the documentation we received from Mr. McCarthy, yes, there's no record.
If you allow me, uh, good evening, my name's John Tarchi, five ten six...
Mr. Tarchi, yeah. Counselors, you guys have any other, further questions or comments? That's, that's as far as we've gotten, uh, at the council level. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Tarchi?
Is this gonna remain here?
We don't know. If it's a decision of the council, yes.
Well, I think we should address it.
Okay.
Um, but we would do, we would have a, a better dialogue if we have the information we requested in the first place. You know, so if we can get that and read through that, then we could muddle through how we should handle this situation.
Counselors, any further questions?
Yes, I, I think, uh, Counsel President, I think that we should, uh, the document was, the document was sent to the ordinance committee, um, and we have no, we didn't have this report, we actually asked for that report at the ordinance committee, but we also sent it with no recommendation. When we, we were supposed to work at the, at the, at the, at the ordinance, at the subcommittee meeting. And also, I don't know if we, if we were supposed to be, we were, we were supposed to be sent, was supposed to be sent to the housing committee because this is dealing with housing. And, uh, and there was a prev, a lot that the City of Florence sold to a family, so I don't know what to do with this. I'm still, I'm, I'm still waiting for more information because I request a son, some recommendation, um, um, on that, at the subcommittee level. We have one recommendation here from the, um, from the planning department, which is basically not recommending the item.
So if, Counselor, let me, let me read for the record, maybe this will enlighten us, the, the information we received. So this information was sent to us by, to all of us by Mr. McCarthy in reference to document one fifty two seventeen, um, on May second, two thousand seventeen, and he, he reads as follows. Enclosed, please find the following documents as requested by the ordinance committee in a request for information dated April twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen for properties located at twenty eight thirty Burke Street and thirty two thirty four Burke Street. A, cover letter from John, John Tarchi requesting the removal of, of the covenants from thirty eight, four and thirty six Burke Street. B, site plans for six thousand one hundred fifty four square foot lot on Burke Street. C, deeds for six thousand one hundred fifty four square foot lot on Burke Street, thirty four thirty six Burke Street. D, deeds for three thousand one hundred and four square foot lot, AKA twenty eight thirty Burke Street. E, accessories card for map one seventy eight lot fifty. F, accessories card for map one seventy eight lot fifty one. G, aerial photo of properties. H, a street, streetscape photos two of properties from Burke Street, accessories map of the two lots. My review of the records indicates that the two fam, the two properties were purchased separately by different members of the Tarchi family. The smaller lot was purchased on October of nineteen ninety one by James and Steve Tarchi at an auction from Andover Savings Bank for sixty four thousand five hundred dollars and consisted of three thousand one hundred and four square feet of land with which, uh, a two-family home, with a two-family home on it. City record indicates that the home was construct, constructed in nineteen eighty seven. The larger, the larger vacant lot was purchased from the City of Florence in nineteen ninety four by James Tarchi for a purchase price of two thousand eighty one dollars and with a deed covenant that stated, "The use of the granted premises shall be restricted to a yard and accessory uses of residents at twenty eight thirty Burke Street and at no time shall another dwelling be built on said granted premises." So this is what Mr. Tarchi is requesting that we remove that particular co- uh, covenant on the deed. Now, the que, the, the letter continues, "There's a legal question as to whether the property merged, properties merged for purposes of zoning since the properties were held in the ownership of James Tarchi simultaneously, but he was not the sole owner of one of the properties. The planning office has no record of the house being constructed at thirty, twenty eight thirty Burke Street despite the fact that it clearly does not have enough land to be constructed by right and should have required a variance. The current design of the house also violates the zoning ordinance due to the fact that, one, it is constructed sideways on the lot in violation of section twenty nine twelve C, and, two, all parking is in front of the home, which violates section twenty nine eighteen seven. Both lots are located in an R two residential zone district."
Motion to pass ten.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Both, thank you. Both lots are located in an R two residential zoning district, which requires seven thousand square feet of land and seventy feet of frontage to be buildable. Any further questions or requests for documents can be directed to this office and I will make myself available at city council to answer any questions. That is the correspondence we received. Mr. Counselor Rodriguez?
So what I'm, I would like to, who, um, who's James Tarchi? Is he's available?
He's my late brother.
Who is your brother?
My late brother, yeah, he's passed away.
Okay. So, uh, when we sold, when the, the city sold this lot, twenty eight thirty, um, Monke Street, it was not supposed to be a building there and right now it's, it's a building, correct?
No, the, he, he owned the building at twenty eight thirty, he bought the building from Andover Bank. The building on twenty eight thirty was already there when he bought, he bought that building first. There was always a building there. He didn't build on that land. That building was sold to him through, I believe, an auction or some type of deal with Andover Bank. It was before my time when I was involved in anything, um, and that's when that was bought. He didn't build on that land. That was a building that's been there since, as Counselor said, since nineteen eighty seven is when they have as a building, so I'm here for, my piece of land is owned separately by me, the yard next door, and I'm here for that covenant to get removed. So I'm, I'm separated, I'm trying to separate it from, it is separated from twenty eight thirty.
Counselor Rodriguez, you still have the floor?
Yes. So according to the planning, uh, to the planning, there is no record of a house being constructed in twenty eight thirty Monke Street.
Again, but...
So it, it's, it's, it's a, I don't know what type of research they did, but I'm assuming that it was a, a, going through the, through the records and, uh, and going, analyzing all the particular documentation that you guys provide. So my questions to you and to the, oh, I don't know, somebody here, is this is something that was supposed to be, was supposed to happen or if it's not, there is a, a legal question that we don't have the answer?
As far as the building though, he, he purchased a building that was already built and obviously the city would have to have issued a building permit at the time, would have to give him the variances in nineteen eighty seven whoever built the building. He didn't build, you know, my brother James who bought it in nineteen ninety one, I believe, he didn't, he didn't build a building. And then he purchased a separate piece of land from the city in nineteen ninety four, which I'm, which I'm speaking of is, uh, lot number one seventy, map seven, one seventy eight lot fifty.
Thank you.
Thirty four thirty six Burke Street. So that building was always there. That building was there for, for, again, as the Counselor said, since nineteen eighty seven. That building was there for, for, again, as the councillor said, since nineteen eighty-seven. And I must, I mean, I would believe that the city at the time would obviously issue permits to build a building. And again, my brother didn't build that building.
So councillor President, I think that we should be doing more research about this. I'm not voting in favor or against this item tonight. Um, I was requesting more information in terms of the zoning and the zoning board for this particular property. And, um, and, um, I'm gonna leave it as it is. I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make a motion on to table right now, but, um, eventually, you guys can, you have the floor.
Okay.
Councillor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes, I'd like to suggest, um, that perhaps, I know that it came to the ordinance committee because it's looking at violations, um, but I think it's more appropriate for housing to take a look at it, a serious look, and to have a extended conversation, exhaust whatever conversation needs to take place before it can come back up here. Otherwise, we're gonna have to roll up our sleeves, um, and get somebody to provide us with additional, um, support along with this memorandum. Uh, and then possibly, the Tarchi family might have to present certain documents that would show that that building was not in fact there. So I'm really not looking either to vote, uh, in any way with this because there's too much that we don't know. Okay? I'm not saying that the Tarchi family is not correct. I don't know that. And I don't know if, you know, if maybe we could have a longer discussion. Not maybe, we should have a longer discussion, then it should go to a committee for work. I mean, that's just my, my recommendation. Because I'm not ready to vote for this, it's not. It hasn't been resolved.
Thank you. Councillor Abde.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Um, I certainly won't be supporting this document this evening. There is, as councillor Alvarez Rodriguez pointed out, work to be done at the committee level, whether housing or back to ordinance. But, um, you know, several years, chairing the planning board taught me one thing, is when we have a proposition by an owner to have the city give them relief, the typical question is, what, what we would ask at the planning board was, "What is your hardship?" At one time, a council that preceded us decided there would be a covenant, and it would say, "At no time shall another dwelling be built on said premises." What's changed in a couple of decades? What is the hardship? What is the pressing need? Especially on a lot this small, that abuts a lot that is half the size, has a dwelling on it with questions about it. I don't believe that's the Tarchis' issue. But it, it's a questionable house, it's sideways, and it has no off-street parking on a street which, by the way, is fairly narrow. I know this, it's on, it's in my district, it's, um, it's got development going on behind it, and it butts the industrial park. I, I would look forward to the housing committee asking some of these questions, finding out what the intention is for this property, and, um, you know, giving this, the opportunity to be, um, you know, if there are, if some of these questions can be answered by Mr. McCarthy or by the committees that have been asked for input, um, I'd certainly be interested to hear it before I could ever support this. And, um, with that, I will, um, hold further questions until we hear this again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Madonado?
I just hope that, uh, once this is referred to the housing committee, uh, that we can find out exactly why. I mean, I know that the Tarchi family are now responsible for the violation of the property that is already there because they purchased it after, but obviously, we need to find out, how did this happen? And I hope that the housing committee can find out why a property was constructed in a lot that was not the right size and was placed in a, in a form that is in violation of, of, of ordinances. So I, I hope that we can get to the bottom of it, so.
Councillor Reyes.
Thank you, councillor President. Thank you, all of you. That has been sent out with no recommendation from ordinance committee. However, sometime where we send up documents pending any information, we have the opportunity to decide it up to this level, where we want to do with the, with the document. Yes, we're still waiting for a report that we haven't gotten yet. So I am favored to send this item, since from ordinance level, we don't have any more question, more than pending a report, just to send it down to housing committee. That was my intention, to send it up. Because the same night, we have other documents that we will send it without, um, any recommendation pending a documentation. And I only felt like it was fair to send this one down. Okay? So I think that, you know, we should, what we should do at this time is just to send it down to a housing committee. And we're gonna be able to do more research. We can find a probably better, different avenue, and from there, we decided what we are gonna do with the document. Thank you, councillor President.
I think, um...
Has somebody made a motion ready to?
No.
The president...
Motion to...
Councillor President?
Uh, councillor Rodriguez.
How many buildings do you guys have on the, on those two properties?
One. I own nothing on that property.
No, 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 how many build, how many properties on that, on those lots?
Zero on that lot. There's one on that lot that's...
Zero on, there is, between the...
Between the two of them, there's one building.
One building, yeah, that was the question.
I would like to make a motion.
Yes.
Send this document to the...
No, that's not a motion, it's up to the president, I will...
Yeah, the president could just send it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sending this document down to the housing committee.
Housing committee.
Yeah. So councillors, it's going back to the housing committee. I understand, and we apologize about the, you know...
Yes.
No, absolutely, I understand.
We just wanna make sure that what the decision we make is fair to you and fair to the rest of the city. So we appreciate your patience on this.
Of course.
And by the, and by the way, councillor President, through you, once we, um, decide to entertain this item on the housing committee, we will, uh, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to wait for, for the proper documentation that it was requested at the ordinance committee. That way, we don't go back and forth. Perfect.
Councillors, can I please get a motion that we send correspondence to Mr. McCarthy to?
McCarthy already sent his.
So, to the zoning board?
To the zoning board.
Okay, so to the zoning board.
And what else? There's another one?
What? Land use planner.
I make sure they will come to us.
So, uh, that way, we don't delay the process any further.
Right.
Uh, so let's send the correspondence from this level, uh, to get a response.
Uh, we have, we have two, two departments, right?
So it will be the, um, the zoning board
The planning...
and land use planner.
And notification to the Tarchi family to be present.
The zoning board, yeah.
Um, Mr. Tarchi's gonna be here.
I just like to make do it proper.
It's on my, I'm, I own it solely, there's no...
So I think that, that the difficulty here is that the discussion, it's happening for two separate addresses and two, and it seems like they're connected, but not necessarily. This particular lot, its own...
There's two separate deeds, correct?
Yeah. I, I think it's, even though it's, we are treating it as one property, it's two separate properties, one of which you're a co-owner and one of which you are...
Oh, I own, I do not own the other one.
You have no ownership.
I have no, I do not own it. I have, this, the, the property that's owned by my, one of my brothers, his estate, is, benefits from the property that I own. And I'm trying to remove his covenant that, that benefits that property. I own the lot that I'm trying to get approved and the government removed solely, and have nothing to do with the other property.
Which is twenty-thirty?
What's that?
Which is, uh, what number?
It is, the number that I own is thirty-four thirty-six.
Let's just deal with the housing committee.
And the other one is, it's a separate, but he does benefit that way. Does benefit from this property, but it's not being used by the, at all. It's fenced in. The other unit does have its own separate pockets.
Yeah. So, all right, so this document went out to the housing committee. Can I get the motion to send correspondence?
Yes, and councillor President, I have to insist that we send notification to the Tarchi family, particularly because we're talking about two owners. And they should be able, even though he's here, even though he's here, we're not, you know...
John, John Tarchi.
Yeah, even though John's here, we, we should do the proper way.
Okay.
Where there'll be no questions.
And you can, if you like, you can send everything to my office, because I handle...
Send it to you.
The other one from my brother's estate all comes to my office.
You can give it to our suite.
Okay, so a motion has been made. Properly second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Um, new business, unless there's anything else you want to take off the table. It seems like there's nothing. New business, document one seventy-eight seventeen, handicap parking to the ordinance committee. Document one seventy-nine seventeen, red and rose as heritage committee, use of campana going to the ordinance committee. One eighty seventeen, Iglesia de Dios Pentecostal is going to the ordinance committee. Document one eighty-one seventeen, house of worship, Esplendor of Zion is going to the ordinance committee. Document one eighty-two seventeen, Iglesia Montes de Oración going to the ordinance committee. One eighty-three seventeen, groundwork Lawrence requesting use of Sullivan Park, ordinance committee. Groundwork Lawrence requesting the use of the campana en común, ordinance committee. Document one eighty-five seventeen, parking, fifteen minutes parking sign at fifty-one A Berkeley Street, by councillor Depeña, ordinance committee. Document one eighty-one, eighty-seven seventeen, no parking, ordinance committee. Document one eighty-eight seventeen, ice cream transfer vendor license, ordinance committee. One eighty-nine seventeen, resident parking, ordinance committee. One ninety seventeen, stop signs, ordinance committee. One ninety-one seventeen, protective guard rail on Berkeley Street, um, ordinance committee. One ninety-two seventeen, traffic directional sign, ordinance committee. One ninety-four seventeen, assembly of Christian churches requesting the use of campana en común, ordinance committee. One ninety-five seventeen, permit requirements for individuals who solicit money on public ways, ordinance committee. One ninety-six seventeen, dedication of reso- recognizing the ultimate sacrifice given by private Frank Alen- Alenno Esquire at the intersection of Conquer and Franklin Street by council vice president Mark LaPlante, ordinance committee. Document one ninety-eight seventeen, Director Velbe Cemetery, ordinance for a new position, ordinance committee. One ninety-nine seventeen, Office of Planning and Development, Brownsville Remediation Recoupable Grant, Budget and Finance. Two oh one seventeen, modified street sweeping ordinance, ordinance committee. Two oh two seventeen, ordinance committee, parking. Two oh three seventeen, transfer vendor license, ordinance committee. Two oh four seventeen, transfer vendor license, ordinance committee. Ordinance committee, you're gonna be busy.
Councillor President?
Yes.
Through you, and item two oh two seventeen, I gonna pro- at the ordinance committee level, I'm gonna provide a number
Okay.
of what is, what is needed.
That's okay.
What is needed.
Um, Mister Chair from the personnel.
Sir, we have no items at this time.
Okay, housing.
We have no business at this time.
We don't?
Uh, we have one, uh, waiting for, uh, waiting for documentation we want to notify them. So we don't know if we're gonna get it.
Ordinance committee.
We have no items for the ordinance committee, so I don't think it's need for. So... May twenty-fifth, next Thursday, seven o'clock.
Um, councillor, would it be possible, so before I ask budget and finance, to not, today, earlier, we received the budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen presented by Mayor Rivera. The budget schedule, maybe I should yield the floor to budget and finance chair, Vice President LaPlante?
Thank you, councillor President. So, um, through you, Mr. President, you have ordered a special meeting on Thursday, in two days, to, for us to receive the budget. It's my understanding the mayor will be present as well. Did you see us a brief overview of the budget? Because of the reporting and hearing requirements, uh, these need to be published in the newspaper. Uh, because of that, we need to wait a certain number of days before we can begin our, uh, budget hearings. So, uh, it'll be, um, by the eighteenth, I will have a more full schedule, but I will suggest to you, councillor President, that we will not have any, uh, FY two thousand eighteen budget-related matters. Next week, rather, we will have, I think we have got a couple of items you threw down to us. You don't, you...
Yeah, so budget and finances, about three, four that are going down today.
So we will have our usual, uh, budget committee meeting on the twenty-third to deal with the typical, usual stuff.
Okay.
And then, uh, I will need to reconvene with members of the committee, including yourself.
May twenty-fourth, you mean?
I'm sorry, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-third?
Tuesday?
Tuesday, that's our usual day, is it not? Or is it Wednesday?
Wednesday.
I'm sorry, we would change it by this way. The twenty-fourth is correct. We'll have our normal city, our budget committee meeting, our normal three items. The following week, starting on the thirtieth, we will begin the budget FY two thousand eighteen deliberations. I will send, um, we expect to be the thirtieth and the thirty-first, and then expect to see, um, the following week, uh, three more dates. And I will provide that to you, Mr. President, for, um, for, and the clerk, uh, in the mayor's office, uh, for distribution. But, uh, it looks so far, the thirtieth and thirty-first are the first two days, and we are going to tie down the other, any conversations, but it'll be the following week, there'll be three more.
That makes sense, yeah.
With that said, Mr. Clerk, my suggestion will be that if we were to go that route, the week of June eighth, we will be hopefully wrapping it up. We could send that to the full council and have a very quick special meeting again, which I was hoping we didn't have to. But we could do a special meeting on the thirteenth to order the public hearing for, because we will have to order a public hearing.
Can we order the public hearing now?
Or, or Tuesday, uh, Thursday?
Um, is my suggestion, councillor President, would, and councillor vice president, since we have a little bit more room scheduling for the thirtieth and forward, the publication, um, and the exact schedule, I'm not gonna need until, uh, the latest, uh, at the eighteenth. That works out very well.
Thursday.
Because then I can hit that publication with the Tribune, uh, on the twenty, excuse me, I'm looking at June, my apologies, on the twenty-third, which starts the meetings as you're suggesting on the thirtieth, and leaves available for an intervening publication with probably rumble as well, and maybe other papers, uh, as well. But that being said, my suggestion is on the eighteenth that two orders for a public hearing be issued.
Okay.
One for the, uh, subcommittee meetings as needed, and the second for the projected date that you anticipate the budget will be returned for consideration.
Okay.
That way, I would be free to publish it at any time that the council would have, unless there are changes that you want to make, and that certainly would withhold publication. So any date you want to schedule the, the final hearing, the order would already be there, and you would not have to meet again.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I think that sounds fair.
So that work through you, Mr. President, that work will be done on Thursday. I guess the only question I would have right now, councillor President, I think for, for those of us who intend on showing up, is just to ensure that we'll have a quorum on Thursday. I can commit to you that I will be there on Thursday, and I'm just wanting to make sure that we have enough commitments from other councillors.
This Thursday, I'm not gonna be able to.
Okay. We, all, all we need to do, ju- this is a procedural meeting, um, we just simply need to be able to accept the, the, the budget to send it to the committee. So it will be about ten minutes.
So that's when, this Thursday?
Oh, the mayor's gonna speak, so maybe that's gonna add another thirty minutes.
Well, no, 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 it won't be that long, no, no, thanks.
So, I'm sorry, this Thursday?
This Thursday.
So it will be, it will be more of a procedural meeting. We're not gonna really discuss or engage in, in, in conversations. The mayor will likely give a... engage in, in conversations. The mayor will likely give a speech, and once the speech is over, it will be referred to the subcommittee, and we could, we could go and start reviewing the budget on our own.
What time is that gonna be?
7:00 PM. So if we have five members.
I, I just, it's scholarship night, the alumni scholarship night at Lawrence High on that night, and so I might just be a little bit tardy, because I, I'm committed to being there.
Councillor Rodriguez.
I have nothing on my schedule.
Okay, councillor Abdi.
You have ordinance.
No, not this week.
It's this Thursday.
This week, yes, I'm sorry.
Councillor Abdi?
I cannot commit, but I, I'm, barely likely I can be here for 7:00 PM.
Okay, so that means that we should have.
I'll be here, just, might just be a little bit behind.
Yeah.
Three, four, five.
Five, yeah. So councillor Ortiz will arrive a few minutes late.
Yeah.
Why don't we do it at 7:30?
7:30 more reasonable. Councillor Abdi, we have it posted, we could start late.
Yeah, I mean.
We posted it at 7.
We posted, yeah, I'll just be a little late.
Yeah. So I think we, we're good to go. So Thursday should be okay. We have five members, even if we start a few minutes late. And it should be a very.
Seven.
Seven, yeah. We'll start, it seems like we're gonna start a little late.
Somebody let Brian know?
Yeah. Teresa, can you please notify councillor Alvarez Rodriguez and councillor Depeña? Okay, so that's it for tonight.
What are you doing, John?
Motion has been made on property second. Any discussion? If there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.